Okay, it is seven o'clock, and so we will convene the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 19th, 2024. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as a community in our nation, we are ever so grateful for the many opportunities and successes and achievements that profile Batavia. Tonight, we have just had the official ribbon-cutting for the newly-created Batavia Government Center at the corner of Houston Street and North Island Avenue, and we are hopeful that this 100-plus-year-old building will easily serve this community for another 100 years with all the new modern conveniences and designs and innovations that have been put into it. And we're ever so thankful that we did this at a very, very respectable expense in comparison to many other public buildings that we've seen built in other areas of the country. So tonight, we're ever thankful for the leadership of our city council and for their ideas and contributions, and we know that each member of the council is here to do what they know in their own hearts and minds is in the best interest of the Batavia community. Also tonight, as we always do, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask for a special blessing to be shown on each and every one of these individuals as they go about their vital missions. And finally, we ask for understanding and direction and vision on the part of the city council as they act on the items of business that are on our agenda tonight. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Chantet, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, do please call the roll.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Kiefer?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Vocal singer?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Very good, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item four is a reminder from the chair that if you're going to speak to the city council tonight, and this meeting is being recorded for television, that would you please come forward and use the podium and specifically the microphone there so you can be heard to the listening audience on TV? And item five is items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody in the council have anything? Guess not. I specifically, before the meeting started, I went over and took off that wall there by the clock, this particular picture. And this is a picture of the Batavia dedicated, the Batavia City Council chambers are dedicated to Mayor Arthur W. Swanson, mayor 1961 to 69, and Robert B. Brown, mayor 1969 to 1970. In recognition of their insightful leadership and visionary community planning, and we did this on March 15th, 1998, I want to share this tonight because of what we just had, the ribbon-cutting of the renovated, yet again, city building. And it is these two gentlemen, whose pictures I hold here in my hand, that really deserve the credit for all of us being in this building tonight. This was a very highly controversial and political decision that was made. There was major opposition from members of the community about the city buying this old abandoned windmill factory, and how could that ever be turned into a city hall, government center, and police department? But these two gentlemen held the ground, and it started under Mayor Brown, he was the one that, Mayor Swanson, he originally promoted the idea, and then when Mayor Brown got elected, he picked up the idea and drove it home that it needed to be done. And I know to the end of their days, both of these gentlemen are deceased now, they oftentimes shared with me all the consternation and yelling and screaming they had thrown at them by people about buying this piece of property. And today, I come down here and I look at the Riverwalk, which we have, that later was built around it, and we have the Peg Bond Center and all the concerts and activities, and all the utilization that the community gets in this beautiful setting. And what I really get, take pride in is all the other mayors and people from other towns that come in and say, boy, Batavia's really got this neat place down here with this Riverwalk and this Peg Bond Center and the band shelter, and the pond right next to it, boy, this is really a great idea. Well, these two guys were the ones that drove the idea home, so I just wanted tonight to begin this meeting as we cut the ribbon to pay a tribute to them for what they did to really put this into place. Okay, moving then to item number six, which is the consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, would you present this, please?
Honored, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the Plan Commission minutes for August 2nd, September 20th, and October 4th, 2023. Approvals: the February 16th, 2024 payroll in amount of $1,015,355.77. The council payable check register in the amount of $4,641,634.56. City council minutes for February 5th, 2024. Resolution 24-23-R, accepting grant easement for cell tower access in the Winding Creek Development. Resolution 24-24-R, authorizing a contract with Rauchian Sullivan Strategies LLC for governmental representation services. Resolution 24-25-R, the 2013 Go-Bond Abatement IEP-A refunding. Resolution 24-26-R, the 2015 Go-Bond Abatement for Electric 138 KV. Resolution 24-27-R, the 2017 Go-Bond Abatement for Drainage and Windows. Resolution 24-28-R, 2019 Go-Bond Abatement for the Fire Stations. Resolution 24-29-R, the 2020 Go-Bond Abatement for Water Manes. Resolution 24-20-R, execution of a contract with Home Retrieval Service for the Carriage Crest Attention Base and Tree Removal. Ordinance 24-16, amendment to the text of zoning code for the Mobile Home Park Regulations. Ordinance 24-17, amending Title III of the City Code for the Mobile Park, Mobile Home Park Regulations. Resolution 24-22-R, acceptance of notice of decision for the Carriage Crest Tree Preservation. Ordinance 24-19, variance for a fence site, that's for 1318 Astor Court, 1320 Astor Court, 1322 Astor Court, 1338 Wintergreen Terrace, 1339 Wintergreen Terrace, 1321 Violet Lane, 1321, I'm mistaken, 21 and 29 Violet Lane. Ordinance 24-20, amendment to the text of the zoning code, Chapter 2.3. Ordinance 24-21, amendment to the official zoning map to add Planned Unit Development Overlay District. Resolution 24-21-R, approving the final platte subdivision for the Windpoint Shopping Center, 201 to 491 North Randall Road, and Class D liquor license for overflow at 144 West Wilson Street. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second? Alderman Chantet? Second, Alderman Sulfah? Would the consent agenda is presented? Any discussion?
Very briefly, I just know in your opening remarks, I believe you mispronounced the name of this building. I believe it's called the Jeffrey D. Shelkey Government Center, not just the Government Center. I want to make sure the record is reflected accurately.
Anybody else have any solid questions? We have a motion, a second. I should call the roll?
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Kiefer? Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
So that takes care of most of the agenda, thank goodness. All right. Let us move then to item number seven, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to address us on something tonight? Could you come up and use the mic and tell us where you are, please?
Good evening, council. My name is Bob McQuillan, M-C-Q-U-I-L-L-A-N, and I live on Walcott Lane in Batavia. I attended at least one Planning Commission meeting a couple of months ago, I guess, when they were discussing the, I think what you're calling now the Batavia Center, the conversion of the old Sam's Club building. And I asked a couple of questions, and they actually really did a good job of answering those questions. And I have, I live close to it, but I have no problems with the plan for what it's doing. But I do have one serious concern, and I did not hear anyone speak about it, and that is traffic. You have a brand-new development going in behind there, Winding Creek, which I think is going to have about 250 single-family homes. You're also going to be, that development will have a bridge over the creek that will head over into the development west of the Winding Creek Development. And if you're familiar with that area, most people come off of Randall onto Mill, and that's the way most people went into the Sam's Club. Now you have a problem in the fact that you will have traffic that will go up Mill, continue on Mill, go into the new development, and the residents will do that. But you'll also have people that will cut through there and take that area, come out on a stop sign at the next light, I forget what it is, but then they can go over another road, take it right down to Main Street in Batavia. And the same thing happens at Walcott and Trent. They come down Mill, make a left on Walcott, go up to the stop sign, cross over McKee, and then go down Brandon, or Barton Trail, and end up at Main Street in Batavia. That's been going on for years, and probably everybody in this room has used that cut through at least one time to avoid Randall. So if you're now having 400 people, or 400 cars in the parking spaces of Tesla, there probably could be up to, on a Saturday, 50 test cars taking out. And I would imagine they don't want to go on Randall on a Saturday, so they're going to take a right on Mill and either go up Walcott or go through that development at Winding Creek and take the back roads there. That's going to be, in my opinion, put a tremendous amount of cars on those back roads, if you want to call them back roads. And to my knowledge, no one has talked about that. And I don't know if this is the right group to talk to about it, but I figured I'd come to the head of the class first, and you guys can filter it down. I'd like to see two things happen. First of all, at all of those intersections, a "no-through" traffic sign be installed, and also on Barton Trail, too, where you could put a sign down on Mill and Barton, Barton and McKee, and then at Trent and McKee, and then at Walcott and Mill, and then at Mill as it goes into the new development. And that hopefully will eliminate some traffic there, and hopefully, for a little while, we'll have to maybe patrol the area and make sure that it's the residents that are using those roads and not other people cutting through. Again, living on Walcott, walking my dog, I know that probably upwards of 70% of the people don't live on Walcott or Trent that go through that area. So again, if you could ask that, or place "no-through" traffic signs in that area, I think it would really help the area. And also, if there could be a gentleman's agreement with Tesla, and I know that this would have to be a gentleman's agreement, that those car salesmen don't use Mill in those side streets, they come out of the dealership, make a left on Mill, come up to Randall, and then make a left or a right on Randall. Because when that creek is built over the new development, you're going to have additional traffic coming from all the developments west through that, over that bridge, and then through Winding Creek again to avoid the light at Randall and Fabian. It's just natural people are going to do that, especially in the morning. So if I have to address someone else, I'd be willing to do that. That's not a problem with, for me, I come to a couple of meetings a year at least, so I'd like that to be under consideration. And the other topic is, although I try to stay off Facebook as much as possible, no one does once you're on Facebook, and there's one Facebook page, I think it's @ArBatavia or something like that, and there was some information on there about the Environmental Committee was trying to figure out how to use the revenue coming from the plastic bags that people now have to buy. And there were a couple of different, I guess, suggestions there, and even including hire a consultant, which is, in my opinion, a waste of time and money. But one of my ideas, and again, maybe somebody can take this up to the Environmental Committee, is if you really want people to stop using plastic bags, take whatever your revenue is from this year, maybe just this year alone, and go out and purchase reusable canvas bags, okay? Make them available here at City Hall, or even at the retailers, Jewel or Walmart, I guess, also has it. Make them free of charge as they go into the store for Batavia residents. And that way, you're taking that money that is really intended to be used not to bring plastic bags into this, or to buy plastic bags at the store, and turning it in and giving the opportunity to people to get a free canvas reusable bag. And in my opinion, that's a great way to use that revenue, rather than have a consultant that studies for a year how you're going to use the revenue. So those are my two points, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, the next is an oath of office. Chief Mazo, would you join me up at the? And we're very honored, this evening, we are going to be swearing in probationary police officer Ian MacCarreno. Is that how you say it?
I'll introduce you to, actually goes by Ivan, so Ivan MacCarreno. Come stand next to me. Actually, I'll just have you hold that. Thanks. So this is Ivan. Ivan is a certified law enforcement officer who joined our department on February 15th, 2024. Officer MacCarreno has two and a half years of law enforcement experience, having served in a full-time capacity with the Cicero Police Department since June of 2021. He is a lifelong resident of the Chicago area and a graduate of Morton East High School. Officer MacCarreno also earned an associate's degree in criminal justice from Governor State University. Officer MacCarreno proudly served in the United States Marine Corps for five years from 2013 through 2018, when he was honorably discharged at the rank of Sergeant E5. During his service, he was recognized with the Afghanistan Campaign Medal, NATO Medal Resolute Support Mission in Afghanistan, Expert Rifle, and Expert Pistol badges. While at the Cicero Police Department, Officer MacCarreno had specialized skills and training in rapid deployment, as well as medical task force trauma care. Officer MacCarreno is currently assigned to our Field Training Division, and we are so excited to have him join our department and are looking forward to the impact that he's going to certainly have on our organization and on the community.
You and I have to go stand out here in the middle of the circle. You have to face this way.
Does he want his family to join him?
And we'd like to have the family come up, too, if they would like to. All right, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Sir?
I state your name.
I, Ian MacCarreno.
Having been appointed.
I've been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
The position of probationary police officer.
On February 15th, 2024.
February 15th, 2024.
With the Batavia Police Department.
The Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
The city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
The counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A probationary police officer.
A probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome aboard. Chief, you need to come back, back up here. We're going to have the donation ceremony for the Batavia Post-Prom Committee, and I think we have some ladies in the audience, and if you'd join the chief and I up here by the podium.
As long as you're on the camera, that's.
I can probably just use this one. We are continuing on with a ceremony that we started, as near as I can tell, about 43 years ago in the community of Batavia. And I had just gotten elected the mayor of Batavia, and we had some liquor stores that were not behaving themselves. So I fined them some pretty good money, and we got, I believe, $3,000. And we had this in a little fund, and I knew some people who were then running the post-prom party, and I said, why don't we give this money to the post-prom party, and that way we can put it to good use, and they can buy some things for the kids and have a nice time and keep all the kids there all night long. So we started that, and the police chief at the time said that was one of the best ideas we've ever come up with. And so we've been doing this ever since that particular time, and I believe that first time was in 1981 was the first time we did this. So every year, a couple of times, I guess, we've had to reach into the general fund and subsidize things a thousand, but we give them three, we're giving you $3,000 tonight, and that will help, I think, buy some stuff for the, and I just want to thank you all because this is all volunteer, this is just your support of the community and what you're doing, and it really speaks well that Batavia does this. And this has gone outside the community on a couple of occasions, and I've had some of my neighboring mayors say to me, where did you come up with that idea? I'm hearing about it from my high school, you know, so we're kind of leading the pack here with that in Batavia. So I'm very pleased. Chief, you want to make some comments?
Yeah, I would just say, my hope is that we actually have to dip into the general fund because we're looking for 100% compliance when we do our checks, but sometimes it just doesn't happen, so. But I just wanted to say thank you to the committee, thank you, I know Bob Hanson's out here in the crowd right now, he opens up his doors at Funway, so what a great opportunity for kids, you know, to come out after the prom, it's a healthy, safe environment, and it's a lot of fun. So on behalf of the city, I present you with this $3,000 check, and again, thank you so much for what you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this. This goes a long way for the kids, and they thoroughly enjoy their time, they actually talk about it, they're like, they're, they talk about it for weeks to come afterwards, and we can't thank you enough for this, we wouldn't be able to do it without you. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Moving then to item number 10. We are honored tonight to have with us Britta McKenna, who I know most of us all know. Earlier tonight, I talked about the, some of the amenities of this particular site. Britta and her husband were two of the real leaders in building the Batavia Riverwalk through downtown, and they were new residents to town, as I remember when we started this, and they were kind of a helping driving force along with several other Batavians, and we got that done. So Britta's done very good things for the town, and the last few years, she has been kind of the connection between Batavia and Fermilab. And Fermilab is really rising to the occasion. I had the opportunity to be out there a couple of years ago, when the International Electrical Engineers showed up and presented Fermilab with this beautiful plaque in recognition that the MRI Medical Research Machine, the technology for it, had been invented at Fermilab. And needless to say, that keyed off all kinds of different experiences for me, but I'm not going to get into them tonight. But Fermilab has done a wondrous thing, they've been a great neighbor, and I have this quote that I have hanging on my wall that quotes me in the Chicago Sun-Times, is saying, Fermilab's a great neighbor, it doesn't smoke, smell, pollute, turn on bright lights, generate traffic, or make any noise. And that's all, that's all very true. And so they've been a great neighbor, and so many of their employees, and we have a couple of them here with us on the council, have some connection with Fermilab. So Fermilab has been a contributor to this town in a lot of ways, so Britta, I'll let you take over and do your introduction of, we're honored tonight to have the new executive director.
Yes, very excited. So I'm Britta McKenna, and I've served on the Fermilab Citizens Advisory Board for about eight years, I would guess, representing Batavia. And I'm very pleased, tonight, we have two staff from Fermilab. We have Ray Moss, who's the Senior Communications Director, and we also have the, I can't call her new-new because she's in her second year, but Dr. Leah Mermenga from Fermilab is going to give us the next version of the one that I gave last year, it was such a big hit, you all wanted her to come, so she's here. So come on up, Leah, for the presentation of Fermilab's 2023 highlights.
Hello, everyone. Britta, thank you so much for the introduction, and it is really my honor and my pleasure to be here with you tonight and give you, I'm kind of hidden back here, but we'll make it work.
Cameras are way up above you, so they're coming down on you.
Thank you so much for inviting me, and I want to start by saying, Batavia, the city of Batavia, has been a wonderful neighbor to us and a wonderful community, one that we take very seriously. So let me just get right into this, and let me see how to make this work. Ah, next, okay. Ah, okay, I think I got this. All right, so 2023 was an extraordinary year for Fermilab and for our communities, both the scientific communities and the neighboring communities. So let's start with some numbers. Right now, we have about 2,100 employees at the lab, and we have a budget that's roughly between $750 million a year, and it's growing on the basis of a large number of capital construction projects that we're executing and funded by the Department of Energy. Over 2023, we had more than 16,000 site visitors that came on site, and more than 6,000 of them came to the Lederman Science Center. And we had more than 30,000 students that went through our various programs. We take STEM and workforce development very seriously, and we dedicate a lot of our effort to that, and the numbers show this. We have about almost 900 between undergraduate and graduate interns, that they come, they spend the summer, or they spend longer periods of time learning from the world-class scientists, engineers, and technicians that we have at the laboratory. We have approximately 100 post-docs from all over the United States, universities, and around the world, and about 530... And about five hundred and thirty individuals participated in our teacher education program. I'm very proud to say, to give you a heads up, that we are just about to complete an economic impact study of the laboratory, both for the state of Illinois, but also all the other states of the United States. And this is going to be released very soon, in early March. The numbers look impressive and will be very happy to come and share with you because it is very relevant to our communities. And I'm also very happy to say that very soon, we're going to launch what is a technician's apprenticeship. Because we don't only educate scientists and engineers, we also pay attention to these kids that are in high school and they don't intend to go to college. And so we're going to launch a new program that is funded by the Department of Energy partially. And it's our initiative, where we'll come to high schools of the region, we'll send technicians to speak to the kids, and then try to get them to do summer internships with our technicians at the lab. And after a couple of those internships, at the end, they can have a letter of intent to get a job with us at the lab. So those are just some of the things that we have underway and we're going to announce very soon. But let me keep going. So, oops. So over the past year, we had a number of events to engage both our scientific community and our neighboring community. So you can see on the top left, the so-called inauguration of the Quantum Garage. Fermilab is the host of one of five national quantum research centers by the Department of Energy. There are only five in the nation, and we host one of them. It's called SQMS. It is thriving. And you can see the inauguration of a brand-new facility that features in the back five so-called dilution refrigerators, where scientists and engineers can come and bring their qubits and their algorithms and do their experiments and their research. So you can see that we had Governor Pritzker there, the undersecretary of the Department of Energy, Congressman Foster, and many other VIPs. On the one below, that's from a groundbreaking ceremony. It was actually a triple celebration, bottom left, that we had last April. And you can see the governor loves us. He's there again, and so is Congressman Foster and Casten. And the tall person next to me is the Deputy Secretary of the Department of Energy, who is actually from the area, from Illinois. Deputy Secretary Turk. Bottom right is the first outdoor family fair we had since 2019 in the laboratory. I hope some of you made it. Excellent. Where we welcome back families of our community. We opened up the doors of the lab for a whole day of science, of the environment, the prey, and so on. That was the first since 2019 and attracted more than two thousand people to come to the lab. And we're just planning with Ray, we're going to have a bigger one of these events. We're dreaming to have a true open house next year, but it takes a lot of preparation, so we need to plan for it. But it is in our plans. And top right is a meeting of the scientific community. So I'll talk some more about that. It is the committee that put together a ten-year strategic plan for the field of high-energy physics. And they came in December in a town hall at Fermilab to unveil the plan to the entire community, the U.S. scientific community, the U.S. and the world. Let's, oops, this is a little touchy. Let's talk a little bit about our flagship project, which is the Long Base Line Neutrino Facility and the Deep Underground Neutrino Experiment. As you know, we are in the middle of constructing what's going to be the best-in-class experiment to study neutrinos. Neutrinos are fundamental elementary particles that are everywhere around us, the most frequently found particles in the universe after photons. Yet we know very little about them, and they, they may hold a lot of the secrets of why the universe is made the way it is, why we are even, we are here, why we exist. Because at the very beginning of the universe, equal amounts of matter and antimatter were created. But then now, we're all made of matter only. So where did the antimatter go? The neutrinos might give us hints into answering this question and many more. And that's why we are investing multi-billion dollars into the enterprise of LBNF and Dune hosted by our laboratory. So this is in execution right now. In fact, it's making excellent progress. LBNF is the largest project, scientific project of the DOE Office of Science at three point three billion dollars total project cost, plus an additional roughly one billion of contributions from international partners. So we have our international partners build stuff and come and install them here in our scientific infrastructure to do this experiment. So this LBNF has two sites, here in Batavia and in Lead, South Dakota. We produce the neutrinos here, and they travel to Lead, South Dakota, eight hundred miles away, to be detected in huge detectors that are one mile underground. So the excavation of the caverns that are going to house the detectors for LBNF and Dune is, I'm very proud to say, a hundred percent complete. It's been two to three years going on. And we just a couple of weeks ago completed the excavation. We removed eight hundred thousand tons of rock from one mile underground, brought it to the surface, and dumped it in order to make room, like you see in the photograph, to house these huge detectors that are going to detect neutrinos that come from Batavia, Illinois. And the end, the installation of the detectors is going to begin this year. Oops, okay. And our partners are building components for this experiment. What you see here in the truck is components from the so-called cryostat. This is the frame of these detectors, these two huge detectors. This cryostat was built at CERN, the laboratory in Switzerland, Geneva, Switzerland, because CERN is one of those institutions that contribute to our experiment. So they built the cryostats, and they're delivering them up in the headframe in South Dakota. So, and they'll go piece by piece down to where the detectors are going to be to start the installation. Okay. And at the same time, we've started the construction of the near site, here in our site. As you drive up Kirk Road, you can see now already quite a bit of construction going on, like the picture is showing here. So this is the site preparation for the near site of LBNF. It's only a few months long. It's going to be done in the, in spring. We're bringing equipment, removing some shrubs and trees and soil and regrade and to prepare the ground for what's going to be the near-site construction, which is another hundredth of million dollars of civil construction. That means a lot of jobs for the local people as well. So this, you now, okay, okay. And as I mentioned, our partners are building equipment that's going to be installed here. CERN, for example, is building the cryostats, the frame that you see. The picture that you see on the screen is a picture of one of, of two altogether detectors that will be installed one mile underground in South Dakota. And they'll be filled with liquid argon. So the outside frame is called the cryostat. And these frames for both detectors are contributed by CERN. And what you saw in the truck I showed, I showed you earlier were parts of this cryostat, the red cryostat, that started to be built and it's transported to Lead. So this is the first time in the sixty years of existence of CERN that they are contributing to scientific infrastructure outside Europe. So it is major. Their contributions, CERN alone exceeds a hundred million dollars. So, and just as, oops, I apologize for this back and forth. And the experiment itself now is supported by a very large scientific collaboration. The Dune Collaboration has about fourteen hundred people from around the world. Roughly fifty percent come from the U.S., fifty percent from abroad. And representatives of this Dune Collaboration got together in November at our lab, and we signed a memorandum of understanding that is a commitment from the different countries to contribute hardware to the Dune Experiment. And this picture is from, from this meeting that we had. And you can see some of the contributing countries, Canada and Brazil, and Germany, and Italy, and France, and Switzerland, and UK, and Poland. And just like CERN is contributing to our infrastructure, we receive money from the Department of Energy to contribute to the CERN upgrade of their Large Hadron Collider. This is a big, major accelerator, the highest-power accelerator that exists in the world right now, to do physics of the Higgs boson. This is different type of physics. Because particle physics experiments are very large and massive, they require a lot of expertise and cost a lot of money, we sort of have split the whole thing. We do study neutrinos, and we are the center for the study of neutrinos. CERN studies the Higgs boson, and we go there to study the Higgs boson with them. And as part of that, they are upgrading their accelerator, and we are contributing to the upgrade, both the accelerator and the detector. And what you see on the track is a thirteen-meter device that's called a cryo-assembly that houses two magnets that are going to squeeze the proton beams to very small dimensions in order to collide. This is one of the deliverables from us to CERN. And this is the very first deliverable from our country to the upgrade of the LHC. And this was sent, was completed at our laboratory, built and tested, and met specifications. And right before the holidays, it was shipped to CERN, and it arrived. And of course, they had a big celebration, very happy to receive this first deliverable. We'll be sending nine more. And this is great work because it keeps our engineers employed and at the state of the art of technology, of accelerator technology. And I'd like to come towards the end by talking a little bit about the P5 report. So 2023 was an extraordinary year, also for the field of particle physics. This field is very well organized. And every roughly ten years, they get together and write what is a strategic plan for the entire field for the next decade. And so 2023 is the year where they got together, you see the committee in the picture here in our auditorium, and came up with a new strategic plan for the field. Well, I'm so proud to say this plan just totally, they totally incorporated the vision that we had created for our laboratory and for the field. It is our vision and our aspirations is totally reflected into this plan. Further, and it's been accepted by the community and, very importantly, by the Department of Energy as well, because, because the funding comes from there. So the plan is bold and provides a balanced and bold vision. It strongly endorses our ongoing experiments and new projects, LBNF and Dune. And it recommends that we complete LBNF and Dune. And in fact, we upgraded. And they call it a definitive neutrino oscillation experiment. So we always say we're building the best-in-class neutrino experiment, and they endorsed precisely this. And in addition, it recommends, it asks us to go away and come up with a twenty-year strategic plan for the evolution of the accelerator complex in our laboratory. And to make it also consistent with a so-called neutron collider. This is a major new facility. When it's realized, it will bring, what CERN is doing now in Europe, will bring it back into our country. Just like we had the Tevatron, and then we went to neutrinos, the neutron collider is going to bring back both the energy and the intensity frontier back to our country. It's going to be huge. So stay tuned. We'll have a lot more to report. And in terms of physics, we published a very intriguing result last August, where we observed a deviation, a discrepancy between experimental data taken in our lab and theoretical data. We still have more data to analyze and more theory to develop. If this discrepancy persists, it could be a signature for new physics. And we'll know that in a couple of years. We'll be back to report. And this attracted lots of attention from the media and stories and so on. And we take sustainability very seriously. And so I'm also very proud to report that this year, last year, I mean, we put together our first professional sustainability team of four experts in our laboratory who take care, who have developed a roadmap, a strategic plan for sustainability in the laboratory, and worry about ensuring our buildings are made to be sustainable, but not only, also the scientific infrastructure, the accelerator, the components, the magnets, the power sources, and so on. So, and everything that we do, the entire operation. And, and of course, we were very, very happy. We listened to the community. We, it is in our DNA that we are, we remain an open and welcoming laboratory. But we must do that by, at the same time, ensuring the safety and the security of our employees, of our users, of our visitors, and of course, the stewardship of the equipment that the government has entrusted in us. So we must strike the right balance between openness and safety and security. And we have worked very hard the past year to strike that balance. And we're very happy that on January twenty-third, as Mayor Schilkert knows, we celebrated the opening of the Wilson Hall. And he honored us with your presence, as you can see in the picture. And we're always, of course, with a real ID welcome visitors to come and walk in the trails and see the bison and bike. And now even come to the Wilson Hall and have lunch with your family and friends. So, and we do all this ultimately in order to bring science to the world and bring the world to Batavia. So thank you very much, and I'm very, very happy to answer any questions. So thank you very much, and I'm very, very happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Paul McChanson?
I remember back when the science was switching over to Europe, there was a lot of concern because of the political environment we were in, that there might not be funding. I know you're excited for things that are coming in the future. Can you speak to that? As the pendulum swings between Europe and the United States, how can we ensure and what can we do here in Batavia to help support your vision, to make sure that funding and all the support that you need is there for you when you need it most?
Wow, thank you so much for this question. So I'd like to say that, let me break it into two parts. The first part is in terms of funding, the Department of Energy is very strongly committed to seeing through this whole neutrino science enterprise that we've started now since several years ago. And they are absolutely strongly committed. In fact, a couple of years ago, they produced a new funding profile for LBNF and Dune that allows us to complete the project a year and a half earlier, in order to be very competitive on the science that will deliver, and also in order to match the funding profiles of our international partners. So I would say I see very strong commitment on our projects. Right now, we're executing a portfolio of projects in the lab that is $5.5 billion over the next years, over the next, sorry, up until 2031 roughly, totally integrated. So each year is more than, it's about half a billion dollars in projects. So I'm not worried, I must say, about funding for the projects. Funding for research and the operation, that varies from year to year, and it's something we need to always actively manage, because we want to retain the talent that we have, and we want to have, to be ready when we complete the projects, to exploit scientifically the new projects that we put online. Now, what can Batavia do? This is an excellent question. Just advocate for us, I would say, like you have been doing. Remain these trusted partners that you have been, and partner with us. Come and enjoy what the laboratory has to offer, in terms of science, in terms of STEM development, Saturday morning physics, engage, I would say, engage with us, partner and advocate for us. That's what I can think right now. And thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to ask, I know a few months ago, there were discussions on Fermilab building a hotel on site for visiting staff and scientists. Is that still progressing and has the details for that changed recently? I believe it was going to be close to Kirk Road, but I've heard rumors it might be on the other side of the lab now.
Yes, thank you for this. So this is another exciting thing that we should have added. So the state of Illinois appropriated $30 million for a new housing facility for our laboratory. So we have, which is phenomenal, $30 million for a new building, for housing, for our users and visitors. So we actually, since we have a little bit of time to develop the plans for this, we formed the committee, and we, around it, we formed a broader vision that we call it discovery on the prairie. And we've been working very hard to articulate a vision around this housing facility that also includes STEM, for example, even a tech hub. It's related to site access, and it's related to reimagining the village we have for our users and affiliates. So as we evolve with the plans, we're now, we are, we have engaged an A&E firm for the housing facility. We're exploring three different sites, all of them are near the village though, not on the Kirk Road side. Essentially, as we understand better, the map of the laboratory, we are able to place, let's say, future facilities at the right location where it makes sense. And so we have three locations explored by the A&E firm, and the way we're going to go about it is, we're going to call Phase One, the housing facility that we can build with the $30 million from the state, and then we're calling Phase Two, our broader vision that includes even expanding the housing facility, but even more, a new daycare center, for example, and a new reimagined village. So we'll put the vision together, and then we'll go out and advocate for funding to realize it. But in the meantime, we'll build the Phase One with the $30 million. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We're very excited about that as well, by the way.
Anybody else? Questions?
Well, on behalf of the City Council, I want to thank you for coming down and giving us probably one of the more comprehensive reports on Fermilab we've had in some time. So I really appreciate your communications and your openness and your discussion that, I think, provides a lot of answers and a lot of, you know, hopes and dreams of a lot of people that Fermilab continues to go in the right direction. And under your leadership, I'm most confident we will. So I appreciate all your good efforts tonight and in the days ahead. And Batavia looks, as you and I talked prior to the meeting, we look forward to working with you very closely in the days ahead.
Me too. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to item number 11, which is recognition of Batavia Esda. Chief, you going to bring this up?
Yep. Good evening. It's my honor and privilege to recognize Mark Davis, our Esda manager, for his efforts and dedication in recertifying the city of Batavia as a storm-ready community. Mark, through his efforts over the last five years, has helped prepare us and worked with the National Weather Service in providing an outstanding, an outstanding job in not only our storm-ready program, but in monitoring our weather and severe, and I'm sorry, siren warning system. So I'd like just to give him the opportunity to discuss that and let you know that through his work, we have been recertified as a storm-ready community by the National Weather Service. Mark?
Okay, I'll make this really quick. Basically, this is a, it's a National Weather Service, we have guidelines we have to meet to be storm-ready. And most of this with communication, education, and mitigation of severe weather. As you all know, last March, March 31st, we did have a tornado go through Batavia. We did warn for that tornado, we did help, we took pictures, sent it to National Weather Service, and they did confirm we had a tornado. As part of the program, also part of this program, I gave everybody a sheet, and the second page, there's a possibility of some flood discounts for flood insurance. So we need, that's something we're going to look into, we're going to see if that's something that we can work on. So basically, we have the outdoor warning system, we have our Facebook page that automatically puts warnings. I think I was here five years ago, and I think at that time, we had 500 Facebook followers. We now have 2,200. And every day, there's a update of whether it's going to be stormy or not, or whether you have a fog advisory, or winter storm warning, that's all automatically updated. And occasionally, we do upload the local radar via YouTube and Facebook. So with that said, March 3rd through 9th is severe weather awareness week, of course, in Illinois, which means on the 5th, the first Tuesday, we will be sounding the sirens again for the full seven minutes. As that's being done, those who can hear our sirens, we would like them to practice or review their severe weather preparedness activities to make sure they're up to date and everybody's on board with what they need to do. It also goes for Fermilab. So, and I do want to take the moment, and this is no knock on Fermilab, I love Fermilab, but I keep telling everybody, there is no such thing as a Fermilab bubble. Okay? That's a sore thorn in my side. So basically, that's what it is, and I hope, I'm proud that we're continuing to do this. I have 24 years with Esda, 13 as a volunteer, and 11 as a manager, and I'm proud to be serving the community in the city of Batavia. Thank you.
Mark, on behalf of the City Council, we thank you for your good efforts. You and I know, we work together, and you do a really on-top job of keeping track of what's coming near us and what's going away and what we need to worry about. And so Batavia has one of the better Esda programs in the whole northern part of the state, and I can honestly sit here and tell you that, and I'm very pleased about it. Okay, I guess the last piece of business is the approval of Batavia Tree Commission appointments. And I was sent a letter. I just read it here. What can I do with it? Basically, we've had the Tree Commission now for probably 50-plus years, and this goes way back to, most of the folks that were on it are dead, including Frank Sopp, who was our city harborsian, who just passed away a few months back. But we are in need of kind of revitalizing some of the membership, because we've lost some folks. And I'm very pleased with the list of names that Scott Haynes, as Director of Public Properties and Services for the city, has put together. And he is requesting the reappointment of Gary Holmes, Scott Haynes, Robert Lutens, Dr. Bob Birch, and Kevin Summers on the Batavia Tree Commission, along with the appointment of new members Chad Riggsby and John Higgins. And all will be for a four-year term, and I would ask somebody in the council to make a motion confirming these appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Solva, second by Malay. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Solva?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
13, yes, no, no, none, one absent.
Motion approved. Okay, 13, do we have somebody from Main Street here to talk with us for a minute?
Okay, so it's called the Main Street Minute, so I have one minute to go, right? I'm Kristin Desler, Assistant Director at Batavia Main Street, and happy to be with you again here this evening. As we spoke about last month, this year, Batavia Main Street is celebrating 25 years as a Main Street community in downtown. And so we're recognizing that through a few different ways. On the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see that street banners that we've designed. This is two of four designs that will be, with the help of the city, hung around town this spring. They are featuring some of our programs and events, like the Boardwalk Shops, the Farmer's Market, Cocktails in the Park, and Bat Fest. And then on the right-hand side, this is a social media promotion that we are doing, we're calling it Now and Then, or Then and Now. And it is, we found a bunch of articles in our archives, as well as utilized the help of the Depot Museum to just find some fun facts about how the downtown landscape has changed over the years. And it's been a fun opportunity for us to highlight some of the businesses that we don't always have an opportunity to. So keep your eyes open for those. We are in full planning mode for the opening of the Boardwalk Shops, opening on May 10th. This year, we are happy to share that we've received our most applications ever, so we had 29 applications this year. And Main Street staff and our Boardwalk Shop Committee members, for the first time, sat down and interviewed those applicants. So that was really helpful with the journey process. And I'm happy to share that we have selected 10 shops to be joining us at the Boardwalk. We have a really diverse and fun group, I think the community will be very excited. And we'll be announcing those shops on March 1st. The application for our Farmer's Market and Artisan Collective is also currently open. Thus far, we've received 65 Farmer's Market applications, 22 of those are new applicants, and 83 Artisan Collective applications, 40 of which are new. So there's been a great response so far, and we expect to see quite a few more in the next few weeks. And then this is just a feature that we have done over the last month on our social media that we've called the Love of Local. And the reason for this promotion is really to draw attention to the way that our small businesses gain new customers, and that really is through referrals. So we have found that word-of-mouth referrals is one of the largest ways that they will, to spread the word about small businesses. And so we've been running this promotion to give a platform for the community to share the businesses that they love locally, to tag a friend, and then we have been offering giveaways when they do so. So these posts have reached over 10,000 on Instagram and Facebook. On our last post, we had about 73 comments, which was a great response from the community. And at the end of the promotion, Main Street will give away about $250 in downtown gift cards. And then we are also hard at work on a restaurant guide, which we are hoping to put out early March. We, the restaurant guide will include 35 downtown bars and restaurants. Of those, we heard from 25 of the restaurants directly, saying that they wanted to take part, and they submitted information to us, updated hours, menu items, and we had a professional photographer come out and take photos of each of those spaces. We actually funded that photography through a marketing grant that we were awarded by Illinois Main Street this year. So that was a fun way to use those funds. And the image that you see there is an ad that will go into the Batavian in the March-April issue, so people can scan the QR code, and it will directly link them to a downloadable PDF of the restaurant guide. Ooh, oh, and that's it for me. Was that a minute? If anyone, does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions?
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Well, we thank Main Street for your continued good efforts. I appreciate all the new ideas and activities you're putting forth. All right, Administrator's Report. Laura?
Thanks, Your Honor. We did have quite the crowd here earlier today for the ribbon cutting, for the remodeling of our City Hall here, the Jeffrey D. Shilke Government Center. But one person who I would like to highlight this evening is Scott Haynes' part in that project. He was truly amazing. He really was the center of coordinating all of the activities here. He had to make about six incredibly difficult decisions per day. And he did such an exceptional job of trying to minimize the effect on operations. Never once did we have to close any of our city departments, despite the fact that this is transformational, the way that our customer service counters are set up here, taking into account not only improving the efficiency of our ability to interact with the public, but also to keep everyone safe, too. So there were many aspects of this that came from having lived through a global pandemic, but also just to try to make sure that our employees are as safe as possible while they do their jobs. And so I do want to recognize Scott Haynes, our Superintendent of Public Properties and Services, for his exceptional job in all of this. Services, for his exceptional job in all of this. I also wanted to just make everybody aware that the city has launched Alert Batavia Code Red. You can find information about that on our website. It's a system by which our public safety departments are able to notify our residents whenever there is an emergency, or widespread electrical outage, or, God forbid, we should have a boiling water order. The Alert Batavia Code Red is an immediate way to notify residents of concerns like that, and we hope that everyone signs up. The Plan Commission meeting for this Wednesday is canceled. Instead, there will be an open house for the downtown plan. It's nearing completion, and that open house will be held right here in City Council Chambers from 7:00 PM to 8:30. Our job posting for Full-Time Firefighter ended Friday, February 9th. We are very happy to say that we received 34 applications. And we did this in collaboration with the St. Charles Fire Department. Also, our HR department put together an analysis of the costs for healthcare, since we have been part of IPBC, which is a collective risk. And over the course, we got them in 2016, and here we are in 2024, looking at our 2025 premium amounts, and they have only, our costs have only gone up by 1.5% over all that time. You know, that's compared to the national healthcare cost increases that range from, you know, 3% to 9% per year. So that has been a really great program for our city. The Police Department has some upcoming events. They have officers and advocates from the Association for Individual Development are going to participate in the Batavia Special Education Parents Network Resource Fair, and that will be February 22nd from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at Batavia High School. And on March 11th, the Batavia Police Department and Mayor Schelke are going to be doing a public presentation at the Homestead. From 1:30 PM to 2:00 PM, the mayor will talk about the history of Batavia. But then, from 2:00 to 3:00, the Batavia Police Department is going to present a seminar entitled Fraud Detection and Prevention. And then finally, in Public Works, preparations have begun for construction at the Wilson Prairie intersection. This is going to both replace and improve both of the railroad crossings, and we will also have a stoplight at that intersection. But we hope to complete this project before the end of this year. But between March and November, it might require a bit of patience to get through this area. So just a warning ahead of time that it is a major reconstruction, and so we will do our best to get everybody through there as best we can. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Laura?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the City Council? All right, and I'm going to, 16, the mayor's report, I'm going to be fairly quick. I just want to back up with what Laura just said about the Police Department and myself are going to embark on a kind of a community communications opportunity. And we're starting at the Homestead. And I'm going to begin the program with some, I think, entertaining history notes about different things in Batavia, and I'm sure that will be well-received. But what we really want to do is, we want to get into this fraud detection because we now have in Batavia six senior living communities of various sizes. And it appears, and it's not appears, it's known to us now, that the people in those six communities are probably targets, if you will, of the fraud folks, because they know that the people living here may have some savings, they may have some income, they may have social security pensions, or whatever have you. So they look upon it as a group that they can just kind of communicate via the computer or the telephone and not be seen, or whatever. But we've had some experiences, the Police Department's had, with some of our seniors being kind of duped by some of these folks. And they go after quite a bit of money. If they can get your credit card number, we got a big problem going. And so that's one of the things I know the chief and his staff are going to educate these folks on about, you know, being alert and aware as to how you go about, you know, committing to anything as far as anybody looking for money from you. And so we're starting at the Homestead, and we have six, and I think our plan would be to go to all six of them before it's over with. And we will see what we shall see. But both the Police and Fire Departments in Batavia, you know, I think in the last couple of years, have had record years both times. Last year was unbelievable, the amount of traffic that the Fire Department had, over 5,000 calls, Police Department had over 15,000 calls. And we've seen a real spike, if you will, in mental illness calls of people of all ages. And unfortunately, a lot of it is in the younger generation that's having it. And so we've got some special teams put together to work on that, but that's, again, something that is very troubling to us. On the Fire Department's side, we have a lot of people in need of our ambulance. I mean, huge numbers are now going, I bet you, if we get 15 calls a day, which is not uncommon anymore, maybe 10 to 12 of them are all for ambulances. Or people wanting to have some consultation on some type of an illness, or whatever have you. And some of that probably collaborates with the number of senior living communities we have, but we've had some, I'll tell you, some, in the last few weeks, we've had some real strange stuff here, from stabbings to gun shootings to all kinds of stuff that we don't necessarily not used to seeing in Batavia. And certainly, I know the chief and his staff are on top of this, and we're trying to get things worked out. We'll have more to say about this as time goes on, but we've had some, I would describe it as fairly good cooperation from the Kane County State's Attorney's Office. They've been very good. I am not sure, this is only me speaking, but I'm not so sure that some of these laws that we passed in Illinois about, you don't put anybody in jail anymore, and all this other good stuff, I'm not so sure that's always working. I think that's going to come back to bite those who put that idea on the street. So we'll see what we see. But that's my report for the night, but I'm sure I'll have more to say about it in the days ahead, because both the Police and Fire are really running wild with all this stuff that we get thrown at us these days, and it's stuff we aren't normally that used to. This mental illness thing is just a real burden upon us, and it's something that obviously needs to be taken care of and worked with. But it's a, it's a full-time job for several people in the Batavia Police Department now just trying to deal with that. So, that being said, that's the conclusion of mine. Alton, Sofie, you want to make a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, second by, thanks.
Kirk call the roll?
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting's adjourned, and we're now going to turn over to Alton Chanson, that's going to run a conversation, if you will, on, how are we saying this?
Special Call Meeting.
Special Call Meeting, yeah.
Are we taking a brief recess or are we going to?